Just have opening statements that I'd like to read. Everybody can hear me up in the back?
Louder.
Louder?
Louder.
Is that better? Yes? Yes? This public hearing is being pursued to section 890 of the Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council, and all persons present who believe their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given the opportunity to address council or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Those of you who wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw should commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and address, and you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. The speaker's list has been established in the back, and if you wish to address the hearing, please ensure that your name has been placed on the list located at the sign-in table. You may add your name to the list at any time. Each speaker's initial presentation will be limited to five minutes, provided the comments are relevant to issues at hand and the hearing is not being instructed. This initial time limit is to allow everyone a fair opportunity to address council respecting the proposed bylaw amendment. I'm sure one of the speakers' list has spoken once. Speakers will be allowed a supplementary three-minute presentation which will be limited to additional comments to what was previously presented so that everyone that wishes to speak may. In your supplementary presentation, please do not repeat the comments made in your initial presentation. Please exert the rules, and if you have any concerns with the manner in which the hearing is conducted, please direct your comments to the chair. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members today is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council in this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should be discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. In considering the proposed bylaw, council has received documents which may influence its decision. These documents are available for review and find or located at the sign-in table. Alternatively, they have been and still are on the city's website. Before we begin, let me ask the corporate officer to confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act.
Yes, it has been, Your Worship. I just wanted to mention that I received ten comments since 12 o'clock today, and they were all in the opposition. I say, Your Worship.
Thank you. So I can go right into the speakers' list, and we have, from Hall Pacific, we have Mike Spall, who is going to start off the whole here with a few comments. Mike Spall.
Are you good?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to quickly thank Sidney Ralston for hosting last week's public information session. Both Fraser and I, we will speak with individual citizens. For and against...
Just put Rachel around.
Both for and against the zoning amendment, and we believe the event was successful in ease and fears. Many official information is provided by members of the public capable to address us in a bylaw situation, and I look forward to hearing further comments by the public this evening. Thanks so much.
Thank you. So the first person on the list that has called and would like to speak is George Beeler. I didn't think I'd be first. You're always first, George. My name is George Beeler. I live at 19 and now am off the person drive. I am for the rezoning to allow for development as being proposed. I strongly believe that development will benefit Revelstoke. It will create temporary and permanent jobs and create growth for Revelstoke. It will also send a message to other developers that Revelstoke is a friendly place to develop. This will create growth which will benefit all businesses and residents. It will produce tax base increase and should lower the tax rate for everyone. Through this allowance development, it will have a negative effect for Revelstoke and will reinforce the mindset already existed in Revelstoke. I don't believe that this will have any negative effect on any existing businesses. If the businesses are competitive and friendly, they will succeed. I know firsthand, as I started a business in Revelstoke and had to compete with established businesses, I promise that good work and very profitable prices always prevent. I'm asking this council to consider all aspects and make their decision. It must be made to be of benefit to Revelstoke. It is impossible to make everyone happy. It is definitely not right to allow yourselves to be influenced by outsiders and from comments that have no credibility, such as the two-page insert in the Times Review that have no signatures on any of the comments. I ask the council to have a fair and objective view and to make the decision that will benefit all of Revelstoke. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beeler. Mike Spall asks Cindy Pierce, who is going to make a presentation for Jeff Battersby.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity to speak on behalf...
Speak up, please.
Sorry.
Just put Rachel around.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity to speak on behalf of Jeff Battersby. I was honored that he asked me to read portions of his submission into the record because he is away on vacation at the moment. I want to make it clear that I don't agree with all of what Jeff has to say, but I'm honored to reflect his words here so that you all hear them. He's given many, many pages, and he's asked me to exert the pieces that he's highlighted or we've talked about. So his first comment is that there's always opposition to change from some people. It's important to note that the opposing voices are probably more from the general citizenry than from the business sector. To its credit, the business sector has been instrumental in providing rings of evidence-based information to support its position. The electorate expects that council's decisions will be evidence-based. Jeff goes on to say that council has a legal obligation to follow the dictates of the OCP as per section 884 of the Local Government Act. He notes that the current zoning on the property in question was a subject of intense consideration to meet the requirements of the OCP, which was designed to protect the local downtown Revelstoke, the central business district, our jewel that is a major attractant in its own right. He states it's wrong to say that this development is compatible with the OCP. There is wording in the OCP to the effect that other commercial areas should be of appropriate size and scale to not compete with the central business district. He says that council clearly has a legitimate legal reason to oppose this development based on the OCP. Jeff also states that many business people voted for the Business Friendly Pro-Growth and Pro-Development Council that we have, and I've always supported development. The strip mall does provide fresh investment and new business growth. However, when it comes to being business-friendly, those businesses that are already here, that have invested their money, they live here, they support on man or community activities, surely they don't deserve to have council turn its back on the community to develop that will have a very negative impact on their well-being. That's not about not wanting development or competition, it's about what is best for our community, it's about fairness, a level playing field, and most importantly, it's about following the development path that years of public input have identified as our chosen way forward. It's also about business retention, a current topic with the chainers. It's not the city's job to protect business from competition, but having a business-friendly attitude with existing businesses is paramount because they are a bird in the hand. We'll want to state years of brainstorming in how to get more of the high volume of trans-Canada traffic to come downtown is never identified a mall on the highway as a means to achieve this end. Common sense tells one that the mall will allow the traveler to satisfy their needs on the highway, and it will be one less reason for them to venture downtown. Those who don't learn from history are bound to repeat it, and there's a myriad of history of the detrimental effects of hurtful laws on downtown, a history from policy. We don't want it repeated in our city. With all the good things that have happened since 1985 in Revelstoke, we are a very attractive place for people to invest, and we can call the shots. Don't let anyone tell you that a no to this rezoning request will mean no customer will ever look at it again. Where there is opportunity, they will come. It is all the more reason for Revelstoke to be very careful in whom it chooses to deal with. As long as state this zoning change is passed, will have impacts that will take a few years to be fully apparent, and then it will be too late. The passage of this zoning change will leave no opportunity to turn back from the minute. All of this is completely out of sync in terms of the scale, the location, size and scale parameters of the OCP. Once a rezoning input is in place and the proposals meet, the city's required to be able to exert any control about what happens on the side of its goal. National firms have deep pockets, they can afford to wait for their operations to become profitable. They use predatory pricing and other techniques to gain market share, and when any opposition goes under, upgoes in pricing. Just one more paragraph added by me. The best-case scenario is that we all step back, the zoning change is defeated, and a proper process is established to work with Mr. Platt and this developer, but he's hopefully still interested, and come up with a development plan for the property, and it is a win-win for the community, the developer, and Mr. Platt, and in keeping with the OCP, and the advice about how to make our resort community stand out from the rest.
I think we can give Jeff a few more seconds if he needs it.
The worst-case scenario is a mall development that fails to meet its financial objectives and we're left with a half empty mall and a half empty downtown. Most importantly, we have to deal with the division in the community and get us all back moving together. This has been the key to our many successes to date. I hope I done Jeff's been used justice here. Thank you, Miss Beeler.
Thank you. Stacy Walnot. Ladies and gentlemen, keep in mind that we have a sign-in sheet if you would like to address council in the back corner. Feel free to add your name to it anytime. Stacy?
Hi. Am I close enough to Mike?
As close as possible.
Hi, so I'm pro-development. Everyone I've spoken to in terms of this issue has also been pro-development. The issue on the table here is just the zoning and what is being developed there. Pharmacy and grocery stores, I think we all can agree, are anchor businesses of a community, and the real question on the table is where do we want to anchor our community? And I think if we allow the zoning change to start anchoring our community on the highway, it will hurt the downtown core. It's not about business competition, because businesses will come and businesses will go, some will fail, some will succeed. It's not the issue on the table here, it's not about competition, it's about where our community is going to be centered and based. In 100% of the cases that allow communities that allow this type of rich development, the downtown core is separate. And in my opinion, that's where our sense of community comes from, in people love living in Revelstoke. It's happy, it's positive, the spirit of the community is fantastic, and that grows from out of the downtown core. It will be a detriment to the community if the anchoring businesses are allowed on the highway, and I beg you not to make this change. The zoning bylaw that was in place is correct, it doesn't need to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Gunner, and after that is going to be Bill Shuttleworth.
Thank you. There we go. My name is Mark Gunner. I live at 1051 Shata Crescent here in Revelstoke. I'm not a business owner nor am I employed by any business here. We built our home here in 2011, made sure to use local products and contractors because we know how important it is to keep money in a small town. While the reserve is our initial draw to this town, was the downtown and feeling community that made Revelstoke stand out over other towns such as Gold and Hurley. I've been doing a lot of reading on this issue lately, came across the Revelstoke... I've been doing a lot of reading on this issue lately, and I came across the Revelstoke retail strategy that Island Nation commissioned in 2006. This report compared Revelstoke to a number of other resort communities and included a number of pitfalls to avoid. First and foremost among those was avoiding retail sprawl and the already too common highway developments with national retail outlets that erode the town's identity. Proponents of this current project say that more traffic stops out at the highway, it will venture into town. My wife and I still drive back to our cottage in Ontario every summer for a couple of months, and I've downed that 4,000 kilometer drive across Canada 11 times. I can tell you that the town is a grocery store, another retail convenience out at the highway, we never drive into town. It would be nice if the proponents of this amendment could present more facts than conjecture. My wife is from the small town of Coburg in Ontario. They have a great beach on Lake Ontario and had a vibrant historical downtown, full of profitable stores. Years ago, they allowed a mall to be built up near Highway 401 that included a Zeller's and a Canadian Tire. That eventually led to another, and so on, to the point where that quaint downtown is now ghost town with maybe 10 to 20% occupancy. I suppose the town saw an increase in its tax base, but sure that was not for the long term. I imagine the cheaper prices that the developer promised were also short-term, as long-tenured businesses succumb to the presence of larger chains. So this zoning amendment goes ahead here. Who will be the first to go? According to the National Association of Pharmacy Regulatory Authorities, which is act for pharmacies in Canada, and STACS Canada, there's about 3,745 people per pharmacy in Canada. It's pretty much the same number in British Columbia. So we're pretty much right on both the national and provincial averages for the number of people per pharmacy, the pharmacies that we have here now. So who will be the first to go? Will it be David LaFrenier, born and raised here, with his young family recently purchased the Parables of People's Drug Mart? Or will it be Stephen Hewie, the owner of Pharmacy Aid, a dedicated volunteer in the community, who's recently voted most respected male in all of Revelstoke? Grocery stores, let's take 701 Down Street from us as an example. Two and a half times the population of Revelstoke, they had five grocery stores, the same ratio we currently have, yet one of those recently closed, Safeway closes stores a couple of weeks ago, to the detriment of 48 jobs. Prior to our recent municipal election, the Revelstoke Review ran a number of great articles allowing us to get to know all of our candidates. In those issues, the candidates were asked a number of questions, including, picture yourself running for reelection four years from now. If elected, what do you hope you're able to have as your biggest accomplishments? What are your thoughts on the city's finances, and what ideas do you have to meet these challenges while still providing a level of service residents expect? Addressing the city's financial challenges has pushed the economy into the most common topics raised by candidates. What other single issue do you think is most in need of addressing? The common theme in answers to these questions was listening to input from the citizens, I was grateful for that opportunity tonight. Some quotes attributed to our council include, "In four years, I'd be able to say, we welcomed the input from the citizens of our community, we listened and we incorporated their ideas into our planning. We're able to show that the vision of all Revelstoke is truly reflected in council decisions." Based on council newspaper articles that I have seen on this topic, a majority of people oppose this amendment. I hope that council can still say they met the goal of listening to the community by opposing this development. And another response, "The tax pie for businesses, including manufacturing businesses, is improved by making the pie bigger. Ideas for doing this come from the business community itself." Again, "The Integrated Community Sustainability Plan guides us how to do this, by looking at preserving the downtown core. Working with the Chamber of Commerce, business can turn the corner and rejuvenate first rate." Summary note that I found on the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan, big words, says Revelstoke should maintain a compact community with a vibrant downtown. This extensive study was completed very recently, 2013. I hope this council still wants to be guided by that plan and votes against this amendment, which is most definitely not, against preserving the downtown core. And a last quote here, "I'd like to address the growing disconnect between our community and City Hall. I want to overcome this feeling of separation. We need a wake-up call to City Hall, the community does not feel heard and becoming disengaged. Does this foster a growing disdain for local governments?" Well, I'd say based on the numbers here tonight, and that this is circulated, the community very much wants to be engaged. Let's hope this is a wake-up call to the mayor and council if you hear us. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Bill?
Oh, dude. It's hard to improve over the last two or three speakers who were in favor, but I'll give it a shot. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. We can't deny a development. We probably want a development, but it has to be the right development. It's up to us to decide whether or not we change the wording of the bylaw. Now, we have an official community plan. It describes uses for properties or groups of properties within Revelstoke, the suitable uses. Much time and research goes into developing that plan. I know because I've been on it. The latest version of the official community plan lists many suitable uses for these properties in question. The developers requested council amend the wording in the present zoning so as to accommodate his wishes, not the wishes of the people who developed our plan. The planning committee in the deliberations have considered these new uses to be suitable for the good of Revelstoke, they would have included them. Now, many people feel they will leave a worst effect on their local business, existing businesses, and I am pretty sure this developer has even stated there will be casualties in the downtown. And two things spring to my mind from this. With considerable success, we market ourselves as a tourist town, but I talked to visitors in the summer room, this store closed up, they asked why. They don't get a good feeling from that. We want people to come and invest. If they go downtown and see closed stores, they're not going to invest, they're going to run away. Now, the developer seems wants to include some major chain stores in those businesses which are currently exempted, the grocery store and the pharmacy. Do we really want major chain stores in this town? We kicked them out there or denied them before. Now, I say no. I personally enjoy knowing the actual owner of the store or business I'm dealing with. I also believe the local owners support our groups when they need help. For example, compare the community support from the credit union to what we receive from the three major banks in town. That's local versus chain. And earlier this year, during a fundraising campaign for the hospital, we needed a couple of AA batteries. There was a major chain store right over there. That manager didn't even have the authority to donate two AAA batteries to our cause. That's not my saying, if I'm a local store, I think most local owners would like to give us a package of batteries. Highway development, it does not have to be detrimental, but it often is. An ingredient sample is close by, it's a permanent, it's an endless strip mall that you can't get through class enough. It doesn't induce you to stop in here, the tourists driving down the highway. And look at their downtown core, they're struggling to try and recapture it. Get the addicts and the pushers out, and people, shoppers coming back down. Not to mention what the heck are they going to do with that highway over there? So, I say the right development is out there. We don't have to change our plans to accommodate this one. There will be others that will develop something that the community thinks is suitable. Thank you.
Stephen Cross, and then Stephen Hinni.
Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to present to you. My name is Stephen Cross, my wife's name is Carolyn Gibson, we live at 1515 Prail Road in Arrow Heights, for the record. My family and I are opposed to this rezoning proposal for six reasons: personal experience, the weight of all studies and experiences thus far, the risk, evades, the potential benefits, concerns over fairness on many levels, the OCP and what it says, and the fact that we can and should do better. Both my wife and I have seen the towns we grew up in seriously degraded and eroded by similar strip mall developers on the periphery. While every town is different in detail, the macro forces at work are the same, so the result here is extremely unlikely to be any different. This is not a risk we should take. There is lots of data on this compiled from many towns over the years, the studies that range from market share impact to real estate valuation to social capital assessment to actual asset value of the whole town, and they all share a common finding, that peripheral development does not serve a town well over the long term. In some cases, the damage is less than in others, but in all cases, the erosion and damage of your time makes any initial gains that were realized drown in red ink. Some have said that Revelstoke is different, but no one has offered incredible evidence to support that supposition. And again, we have to wonder what makes anyone think our town is so different from all the other towns that have gone down this path and have been hurt too. Countless studies have shown that peripheral development investment has a low capital yield and a much lower recycling of money in the local economy, only 14% compared to 45% on average by local stores and businesses. This is a proven fact, and as Charles Maron pointed out in the Strong Town interview today, peripheral development has a much higher cost to maintain at the time than core development does. Economics are simple. The highway mall will capture traffic to some degree, but who buys much in grocery and pharmacy while traveling? So the stores will have to survive by stealing sales from existing stores. Since our local market is what it is and not that big, one of the current incumbents in both grocery and pharmacy will fail, and the erosion of the town core will begin. Once that starts, it's a downward spiral. This is not growth, councillors, this is displacement. Why would anyone in council want to foster that? To take this risk seems even more foolhardy, given that Revelstoke is sitting pretty well right now economically, and many homegrown local businesses are seeing the possibility to do more. One thing any economist will tell you is that organic growth is real growth, and far more solid and enduring than the pseudo-growth achieved with artificially stimulated market expansion, which is what this mall would be. Councillors, we simply have no pressing need to do this, and the risks are so great that any potential gain is so little, why would you take that risk with all that has been created, done so well so far? On fairness principles, my family and I are also opposed to this rezoning. When did anyone in our society think it was fair to pit a bigger person against a smaller person in a fight? Do the laws of natural selection and unbridled Darwinism still apply and enlighten the just society today? Few in council such, so the answer is no. And yet there are those in council who seem to believe that competition is competition, and if someone fails, so be it. You know, I stood there last week at the open house, as the developer told David LaFrenier point-blank that the strip mall would no doubt cause casualties, and it is very likely that David's pharmacy would be one of them. He then went on to say that he is a good person, though he would feel very badly about that, but that's life. Really? Is that the kind of developer development you want? Are our sense of values and fairness in Revelstoke such that we would knowingly approve an unfair competitive environment where one of our own suffers, the those who do not live here, can benefit? Make no mistake, our family is all for competition, as is every business owner we know in town, but real competition is about being relatively evenly matched in size, in resource, and opportunity to be competitive. Competition on that basis is completely healthy, makes us all sharper and stronger. If someone wants to put in a grocery store or pharmacy in town, let them do it in the core, but they won't because they know it won't work. Couple more minutes, I think? One minute? Couple more minutes, have I made? One minute? David's story is one, but they're making work. The reality is that most stores in town depend and make a huge portion of their business with visitors. Our store included. Were we wrong to believe in the official documents of the town? Is it fair if Revell's Hope does not stand behind its own goals and strategies as published? We don't think so. Speaking of the OCP, I've heard some say that what matters most is the zoning, not the stated goals and strategies. That is like saying what matters most is the laws of the land rather than the constitution, when in fact the laws are a subset of the constitution. The OCP goals and strategies are very clear. And if the zoning does not line up with those, the problem is the zoning, not the highway goals. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mickey, council. Friends? Yes. Speak up.
My name is Stephen Higgy, I'm the owner of the pharmacy about eleven eighty-three Nickel Road. When I arrived in nineteen eighty-four, Revell's Hope was starting to look rather weary and worn. Got through a couple decades of tremendous prosperity and it was at a junction. If we stayed the same, we would just become a struggling, pit-stuck long highway. A group of forward-thinking and courageous businesspeople, property owners and city council, participated in the government's rebate program and turned our efforts towards destination tourism. In nineteen eighty-seven, I was guided by Mertie Tap Booty to purchase Donaldson's Drugstore. And I've been blessed and privileged to celebrate twenty-eight years of business. I wish to thank everyone for... I distinctly remember talking to Tap Booty one day and I was struggling to go to school further, to buy the business. And she said, "Stephen, you're a caring person. If you carry on as we think you can, you'll be provided at once at lifetime opportunity for a fulfilling life and business." It was a turning point in my life. It's been twenty-plus years and we own a downtown now that is owned by many other communities. I've personally benefited socially and business-wise. Some of my most memorable moments are in the lives of my children. I've operated five businesses over my twenty-eight years. Over the last three months, it's been a tumultuous, to say the least. A great divisiveness has occurred in the community over the retail development issue. A tremendous amount of emotion has occurred on both sides. I have done things I've never dreamed I would ever do, emplaging of windows and letter writing to support downtown core business interests and petition. Can you imagine the observations of visitor coming to town and looking at it? That's not the town I live in. I can honestly say I did not predict the emotions. The frustration and anger tells me, like Mark said, there's a disconnect. And I think the city council needs to look at this and look at, I think, the values and priorities of the community. I think businesses have to do the same. I've heard from the other side, and I've seen it. We have to do better. You know, our customers are saying it's not working. Here's my idea, so you've got to listen. What I'm greatly concerned with is the amount of anger and hostility. And when this is over, we still have to walk the same streets. We'll eat the same restaurants. We might play our same parties. Well, on behalf of our social circles, I urge everyone to forgive and acknowledge us. But back to main topic. So I have a few questions for both of you. Worship. So for staff, I imagine, I think you actually said you'd later. Is how many parcels of land are actually involved in Hall City today? Two parcels of land. How many parcels are affected with this application for this zoning in two zero eight? Just four. Hypothetically, they could merge those now to make a structure. How many other properties would be affected on the highway by this? So those questions that... Spoiled, I could not figure that out. Read over and over. One question, if you develop, anybody around Hall City?
Do you bring the question to me, excuse me?
So worship, one question to Hall City is that there was discussion about adding an extra five or ten thousand square feet to...
I think that's a better question for what, if any, additional space would be allowed to be developed? Did everybody hear that, sir? The question is, is there, what additional space would the developer allow to develop on this site? Other than, I think we're at sixty-three, sixty-five thousand, seems to change at a couple thousand here and there.
Your worship, it's currently at just under sixty-eight thousand square feet. It could possibly add additional square footage. It would be based on the final tenants as well as the configuration for the development curve.
Would it even relatively achieve?
Um, it would be difficult to achieve ten thousand, possible to achieve five thousand. It wouldn't be in one location, it would have to be in several locations around the building.
So just two more questions?
Absolutely.
There's that data report from the authentic two thousand six retest strategy. Predict a more likely negative outcome once the focus of the area restarts. Am I personally worried?
Yeah.
But I'm much, much more worried about by many associates recent startups or home businesses downtown that are primarily ended up on the tourist counter. Or this, I don't know. To the developers to Hall City, if this book does not work to your favor, I can personally vouch that if you had provided your commitment with sincerely care for this community, you would guide it to a successful opportunity. If you are successful, I strongly, strongly urge you to become purely aware of our town's vulnerability and liking that virtue boots and receive these considerations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen, well said. Gary Starling is the next, and then Michael Brooks Hill.
Hi there. Uh, Gary Starling, out of two nineteen Third Street East in Roblesville. Been here for quite some time, as you all know. And had the pleasure of sitting on that side of the table for some time. So I can understand how difficult the situation they're in here. And I wanted to thank the developer too as well for bearing with us on this difficult decision that's facing our entire community. And I don't have too much to say, but I would like to say that the public in the last election process, said repeatedly, over and over, I've heard it many times, that we wanted to see development, we wanted to see forward progress, and we wanted to be business-friendly. And I heard the catchphrase, "If I had a nickel for every time I heard it, I'd be a millionaire," and that is, "Are we open for business?" And so when I hear all this negativity around this development, and I guess you've figured out now that I am pro-development, there's good arguments on either side, and there's lots of good arguments either way. But I haven't heard too much about the opportunities that this development presents. And I think we have to look at that. This opportunity for development will bring a lot of things to our community. It brings first and foremost a tax revenue that's sadly needed here. We've seen pretty stagnant growth here for a number of years. We need that. We need to bring more people to the community. We need jobs. We need good-paying jobs, construction jobs. Those will come with this development, and I would suspect, and I hate speculation because it's right, but I would suspect that if we see this development, we'll see more, we'll follow. But right now, we've turned our hands on it. We had a developer that wanted to build a hotel on that location. And we turned them away because the council at the time and the citizens at the time didn't want a development that was going to block the view. It was supposed to be six-plus stories. Well, several years later, we had a hotel built across the street that's eight stories. So it's confusing at best. I would agree with Stephen that it's polarized our entire community. And I have friends on both sides of this argument, and I surely won't, and I don't lose them, but you know, we need to get beyond this after this is done. I would agree with that for sure. And thank you, Stephen, and I'll call it. You know, the business community has complained for many, many years here. I've watched this closely. And the business community has complained here about high taxes and the cost of operating a business in Roblesville. And I would submit that the only way to protect business from the cost and escalating cost of high taxes is to bring in more players. You simply need to have more companies. You cannot stand alone here or on an island. And, you know, comparing this to other communities is a challenge at best. We are not, every community is different, but Roblesville is somewhat unique. We have a hundred and twenty mile stretch in either direction of vacant land. We are on an island. So, saying that we're going to build this strip mall and that's going to pull people away from the downtown core, I simply don't believe that. People don't have other options here. They're going to shop in your stores regardless. They're coming regardless. It's just a simple matter of expansion. Are we going to expand or are we going to stay stagnant at seven thousand people forever? I could not believe that I ran over four minutes. But anyways, I'll finish up quickly here. Yeah, and you know, I've heard some comments as well that there's been some issue with disintegration between the city council and our community. And I truly don't believe that. When I was on council, I answered every email I got. When people have questions, they need to get in touch with council, they need to converse with them. You can't come to these one-off events and complain that you are not getting a response from them. It's unfair.
Thanks, Stephen. Mr. Brooks Hill, and then Alar Worshtad. Just a reminder, quick reminder before I get to the science sheet in the back. We're getting down to close to the end. I will also open up to Michael Brook, if you just want to walk up to the floor, so, but science sheet isn't back.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Michael Brooks Hill. I live at four fifty-seventh Cedar Street. I would like to say that I very much appreciate the difficult decision that this is for council and for mayor. It certainly is a divisive topic in the community. And one comment I would have is that I would really like to have seen some kind of study done on this topic. A lot of people have been referring to the retail strategy. And just today, a report came out from the same company which made that retail strategy saying that both the developer and the city have been misrepresenting that information as well as pointing out the obvious fact that a report from two thousand and six is outdated. Another aspect that I would like to bring up is that this development runs contrary to the official community plan. Certainly, people have been commenting that new people to the town are against this development. And, a lot of them are. But, this development runs contrary to the official community plan, which is the plan that has been developed over the preceding twenty years for residents who have been here all their lives. So I would just like to read a couple of brief statements from the official community plan. One, maintain the central business district as the primary commercial center. Yes, it is that symbol. Ensure that commercial developments outside of downtown are necessary, convenience-oriented, and limited in size and scope, such that the active neighborhood commercial areas would complement existing potential developments and do not compromise the vitality and success of the downtown core. You see, the OCP is quite popular.
I'm not going to disagree with that.
Consider zoning regulations that limit or restrict the size and scale of retail and commercial development that rich or establishment will draw from and compromise the character and economic vitality of the downtown area. Now... Oh, no applause for that one. Now, I'm sure that the developer has done a lot of research on this. Developers generally do. If he's going to invest, as he says, twenty million dollars into this project, I can guarantee you that he knows he will make money on this project. During the last public hearing, he said, and this is not a direct quote, "I looked for evidence that this would help the downtown and I couldn't find any." Now, either he did look and couldn't find any because there wasn't any there, or he didn't bother doing much research on that. So when the developer comes to town and says, "I have an idea that's going to make me a lot of money, but I can't find any evidence to support that that would be good for your town, why are we going to support it?" Thank you.
Alar Worshtad, and just to go to council, if anybody has a question for anybody, please let me know because I can't...
Can you hear me, Alar? Uh, my name's Alar Worshtad, I live at fifteen fifty-five Millen Street. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-eight. During that time, I made a teacher, coach, volunteer, business owner, currently a school trustee, and now the father of a family. My roots are very deep in Revell's Hope. I'm not against development, I'm against this development. It is not correct development for Revell's Hope. It is not compatible with our OCP, which we took a long time and we had major input in this. I'd just like everyone to acknowledge that, that the OCP had major input by almost every individual. And it is not compatible with that. I guess I'm wearing these glasses or two. I would like just to make one comment. It wasn't very long ago when the city prided itself on being green. What is green about this three-hundred stall parking lot? Are we taking this down? Also, the original idea of a shopping mall was for a meeting site. All I can see is people are going to be driving to a parking stall. They'll be having a three-hundred sixty-degree choice of where to go, and that's it. There's no meeting area, and we know our weather here. So as far as I'm concerned, this is not the correct mall for Revell's Hope. When other communities are looking to improve their retail sector by either expanding vertically or by the web, why are we taking a step backwards and going to an old outdated model of horizontal? I just don't understand. The next generation of shoppers shop differently than we do. They go ahead, they research, they look around, they find what they want. They don't just drive into a location and then buy. They do their homework. This mall is not a grow bit. As you can tell, I'm a business owner. I'm well aware of competition. It's around us all the time. If you don't adjust, you die. My feeling is this mall will turn out to be a white elephant. It won't be able to maintain the occupants. We will get a rotating door of different occupants until finally we end up with either half, fifty percent occupancy or less. And what way to go for first entrance going into Revell's Hope to see this? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just don't see it as being sustainable. I hear a lot of different things about, yes, houses will scam, like, you know, traffic going out of town, dollars being spent. But if you live here long enough, you realize that it's not all about prices. People go for a number of different reasons to leave town. It's for a variety of choice, it's social, it's entertainment, sports teams, health issues. All of these are reasons why people go. So having this strip mall will not capture, as far as I'm concerned, will not capture any additional business nowhere. And as for creating more jobs for... Entrepreneurs are smart. They're going to build something at the best price. So where's the contracts going to go? It's probably going to end up with a lot of other promise groups coming in, especially Calgary now that basically is on a rough time with their economy. So I don't really see a large number of local tradesmen being being put into work here. Lastly, as far as I'm concerned, this is one of the last remaining affordable pieces, parcels of land next to the Trans-Canada that is close to a city in British Columbia. Why are we wasting it on a strip mall when we should be looking at revisiting the idea of a hotel? Serious hotels. Like the idea, I'm not against development. I think having an accommodation-type industry is the way to go. Sorry. Thank you.